Everybody, thank you for coming. This is a regular meeting of the Allendale Land Use Board at which formal action will be taken on the items listed on the agenda and upon any other matters which may come before the Land Use Board. The requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied through posting on the public bulletin board and in the municipal building and the borough website and by publication in the record on December 29, 2023, with copies being sent to the Ridgeway News. Certain agenda items will be open to the public for comment and/or testimony. The board will advise the public as to when such matters are open for their comment and/or testimony. Before we get into the start of the meeting, I would appreciate if everybody would stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Linda, may I have a little?
Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Here.
Board Member Wazala.
Here.
Board Member Petrino.
Yes.
Board Member Gobliaro.
Present.
Councilman Deloissio.
Here.
Board Member Dalla. Chairman Sarico.
Here.
The mayor is absent. Walter Butler.
Here.
Walter McConsey.
Okay, thank you. So we're good and council, we're good with, we have everybody, we're good to be able to move forward, correct?
We are indeed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And before we get into this, I just want to go on the record, I apologize to you that I didn't properly introduce you at the last meeting because of everything. So board members, public, this is Mr. Stevenson DC who is sitting in on our council and as we were with him last month, last month, he took care of us and he's going to take care of us again tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, please, no apologies.
So the first thing that I would like to get into real quick, if there are people here in the public who are here for the Allendale Rehab and Healthcare, AKA the nursing home, that has been the what's the proper word, it's a lady?
Carrie.
Carrie, thank you, Carrie, to next month, that meeting is scheduled for August 21st, 2024. So we will not be hearing that tonight. So if anybody's here, you got a free night. If you're here for the other couple of things that are on our agenda, well, then welcome to stay. Okay? All right, having said that, I will now go back into the agenda. Linda, you're hearing me okay, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go back into the agenda. The first is approval of minutes from June 19th, 2024, Land Use Board Meeting. I reviewed it. I had some changes. I know that Linda put it out to the board. Is there any other changes from any board members on said meeting notes? Nope. Okay. Thank you for that. Then taking it back, may I have a motion for approval of the minutes, please?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. And can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Yes.
Board Member Wazala.
Yes.
Board Member Petrino.
Yes.
Board Member Gobliaro.
Yes.
Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Chairman Sarico.
Yes.
Walter Butler.
Yes. Okay. Before we get into any other areas of our meeting, the first thing we are going to do is we are going to handle the resolutions to from last month, and I believe that this other one is for an extension of time approval. So let's start with the first one, applicant file number 2024-07, Resolution 24-14, 115 West Crescent LLC, address being 115 West Crescent Avenue, Allendale, New Jersey, 07401, Blocks 910, Lots 5.01 and 5.02, the application for a subdivision of two lots. Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a resolution memorializing a approval by voice vote at the last meeting. It was a very thorough application for subdivision approval and variances for, I believe it was lot width with the dimensions set forth as described in the resolution. The applicant's counsel presented four witnesses they referred to in the text of the resolution and actually called the seller's representative as, I won't call it a rebuttal witness, but as a as an additional witness after the testimony had been presented in the main case. We heard from the surveyor, we heard from an engineer, and one of the key elements of the application involved the testimony of the planner who introduced a very relevant and helpful exhibit, A1 it was marked, and that dealt with the deficiencies in lot widths in the residential A-zone in the immediate area as well as on the property. I believe as the resolution recites, the testimony was compelling. Issues that did arise, as we pointed out, were the issue of the terrain and slope of the property to the rear and related to whether or not there might be some adverse stormwater flowing as a consequence. Those issues I felt were satisfactorily addressed by the engineer, as did you, because that was why you did in fact approve the resolution. The planner and Mr. Snikus is here to confirm, I thought met her burden of proof, as did the board, that the positive and negative criteria of the municipal land use law demonstrating entitlement to the lot width variances were satisfied, and that essentially is where you came out. And there are certain conditions which were imposed, which are not should not come as a surprise. They articulate why this application is a better application because of them if they are established as part of the approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members, any comments on the resolution? Okay, thank you again, counsel. Seeing done, may I have a motion for the resolution, please? So approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second, thank you.
What was the second?
Deloissio.
Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Yes.
Board Member Wazala.
Yes.
Board Member Petrino.
Yes.
Board Member Gobliaro.
Yes.
Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Chairman Sarico.
Yes.
Walter Butler.
Yes. Resolution passes? Okay, thank you. All right. Next on our agenda, the next resolution is 2024-08, Resolution 24-15, the applicant's Donna and Paul Deck, 54 Gray Avenue, Allendale, New Jersey, 07401, Block 913, Lot 6, and the application was to allow for an enlarged kitchen and living space, additional garage bay, and a three-season screened porch. They needed a front yard setback variance against 270-57B. Okay?
Indeed, you summarized the application right on the money, Mr. Chairman, and that is what the application recites. There were no experts called in this particular case, and the resolution so reflects that fact, but the applicant's husband and wife appeared and gave compelling testimony as to why they felt that a variance was necessary and a hardship if it would not be obtained and indicated what the essential nature of the purpose for the variance relief was, given the the shape and photography of the property, and that is set forth, and as you pointed out, they are front yard setbacks, and there is a requirement here in this zone, 28.8 feet, and the setback being sought was for 27.5. I don't like to call anything de minimis, but this is not a rather extraordinary request, given the nature of why they wanted the variance, what purposes it fulfills for them, the nature and restraints or constraints of the property, and I think the board concluded that it was an appropriate finding to make, that there would be a hardship and the variance should be granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir. I may have a second.
My second.
Thank you.
Chairwoman Bergen.
Yes.
Board Member Wazala.
Yes.
Board Member Petrino.
Yes.
Board Member Gobliaro.
Yes.
Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Chairman Sarico.
Yes.
Walter Butler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, the third resolution is one that some of us may remember. Some of us may not. But it goes back to an application file number 2022-18 and its resolution for this year, 22-24, the applicant is Evan Karsh at 37 Carteret Road, Block 1503, Lot 21. The application was for an addition over an existing garage pursuant to 270-64B (2). The applicant is requesting an extension of time approval. I don't see, go ahead, counsel, please. Well, you be honest.
Well, that's, that's easy to do. I would say that based on the contents of a letter request and the discussion in that letter requesting the extension that the board can conclude if it so desires to grant the extension, there is a provision, in fact, specific provisions in the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law that provides for extensions of time for approvals. And I think that based on the conditions set forth in the letter, if the board is so inclined, it may and does have the authority to grant extensions. Wish it would have been a little sooner, but yeah, it is what it is.
And this extension, counsel, is for how long? One year?
One.
Yeah, sorry. Not, not one. That's why, just want to make sure everybody's clear. So, all right, board members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion, please, to approve the resolution as just described?
I'll make the motion. Thank you.
My second.
Thank you.
What was the second? Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Yes.
Board Member Wazala.
Yes.
Board Member Petrino.
Yes.
Board Member Gobliaro.
Yes.
Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Chairman Sarico.
Yes.
Walter Butler.
Yes. Okay. The business part of our meeting is completed. Okay, so next on our agenda is the hazard vulnerability study, which will be presented, I guess as a continuation from our last meeting, Mr. Snikus, thank you. So I am going to turn this over to you, sir. All right. Yes. Linda. Time out. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse me one minute.
No, no, I was, I'm the person with 37 Carteret Road.
Apologies. Okay. I'm sorry if I.
It's a resolution to.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to thank you. I appreciate you guys doing that, saving me some time.
Sorry.
The resolution.
Oh.
That was it. That was all Linda and I were discussing. I appreciate all the board doing that. I've been here a few times. You guys are always very fair. I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
And Linda and the building department, excellent. They're always very fair too. So I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
No worries. No worries. Thank you very much. That's okay. That's okay. That's okay. All right. Okay. Thank you again, sir. Take care. All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make sure the microphone on. Are you hearing me okay? Yeah, okay. I wanted to make sure the switch was in the right direction. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As the chairman had mentioned, this is really an ongoing conversation regarding the hazard vulnerability assessment study. But in addition to that, we're also doing on sort of a parallel track, a update to our land use plan. And in our land use plans, there are several items that we updating such in the background that a land use, existing land use survey, as well as the goals and objectives. What I handed out to the board tonight, it's on the case, is a memo dated July 16, 2024. This is a summary of your existing goals and objectives. I thought it'd be best to give you a memo to help sort of boil it down. And what I provided in the first part of the memo is sort of some bullet points that covered regarding prior course and objectives. And what I do is, is I'm trying to give you this information so you have a chance to at least think about it. Think about some of the goals and objectives, see if there's any new issues that may be coming to, coming to the, coming to you of land. And so these are summarized as maintaining the character of one of the two zones, need to maintain a balance of housing types in the community, provide for office, industrial, and related facilities, minimize the environmental impact resulting from development, provide adequate open space, minimize traffic congestion, promote a balanced tax base, minimize areas of conflict and compatibility in land use zoning, and promote the conservation of energy and recycling, of recyclable materials. So I just offer those were topics, and what we try to do is bring into the land use plan any newer temporary issues that may be to address, such as, I often feel, the next paragraph, such as development in 10 three limits, C1 and C2 zone, which is your central business district, if that's something of specific interest, if you want to identify that business district vitality to fulfillment of last mile, fulfillment for last mile warehouse or distribution facilities, probably good to have some sort of statement regarding that in our land use plan.
What is last mile refers?
Last mile is sort of like a distribution center for Amazon, where their vans all get loaded up at the beginning of around 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
It becomes quite an impact of the system. So that has become somewhat of a hot topic at some of these towns. Also, you say in the planning practice, dining is a, is a issue we want to talk about, or consider electrical vehicle charging stations on public lands, that's actually a requirement now that we have in our land use plan, a specific statement regarding to electrical vehicle charging stations on public properties. So sort of planning for those locations. So that's just some to give you some backgrounds. And then the remainders of these are the existing goals and objectives. Do you have a chance to look into it? So instead of trying to find the actual document, here you go. So that's what I wanted to do tonight, just to bring that for tonight, we have a chance to take a look at that. And I'll be coming back to you with some recommendations to those goals and objectives, as well as ideas. So in addition to that, as the topic, the main topic is listing hazard vulnerability assessment study. As we update our land use plan, we also need to do by statute, an update within the master plan, called a hazard vulnerability assessment study due to climate change. And as we've all been experiencing over the last several weeks of July, is the heat wave or heat conditions that we get. That's one of the topics that we'll be looking at, as well as the condition of heat rainfall or flood impacts. What I wanted to show you tonight was a series of maps that we started to prepare, hopefully the microphone picked up.
Net wire extended all?
I'd love to do that.
Yeah, how much more?
No, it's not going to come very far, so.
Linda, you're gonna, just let me know if you're here.
And I'll be brief about this too.
You're good.
If you can hear me from a distance, so I can't pick up the mic.
Okay.
What I have is a series of maps that we prepared, and this is based on information that's readily available, flood maps, buffers, wetland areas, things of that nature. And what's important in this study is that we map those items, see where the actual impacts are. Probably what's most important at this time is the flooding, areas of flooding, that or flood prone areas, I should say. And within that, we've mapped the Allendale Brook, the some of the undefined tributaries, as well as the Hojocas Brook, that's a traverses more southern portion of municipality, as well as the Ramsey Brook. So you can see there's various areas that are potentially impacted by flood zones. And what you're seeing in this map, and what I'd like to do is, if it's, if it's the favor of the board, is send around some of these maps as PDF files, so you get a chance to look at them digitally, instead of bringing you large maps to you to try to look at. I think it's much easier for you to look at that and scrutinize. But in this document, we map those specific items that are available. And what we're also doing is looking at the vacant lands within the community. If you remember, we talked about the affordable housing plan and some of the work we'll have to do in the new year. What this does, it helps us update some of that information relative to the vacant land. In addition to that, if you may recall, back in I think it was 2021, I'm sorry, was the DEP updated their stormwater regulation, actually, right? Where they updated their stormwater regulations, and now they're saying that it didn't change the limits of the flood plain that is defined by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association. But it also required though, is the designed flood elevation, elevation of new homes or for significantly renovated homes sort of threshold that I defer to engineering. It now requires that to be effectively three feet above the 100-year flood elevation. And that additional three feet can have an additional impact on your community. Because now it sort of brings your limit of the flood area additionally, additional distance away from the actual flood zones. The mapping wasn't revised, and this is not a regulated limit of those potential areas. But you'll see on one of these maps, and you can see it in the light tan color that's showing on here, if you can see from a distance, that shows that additional, what they call CAFE, C-A-F-E, is the actual acronym for it. But that, Rutgers University did some general regional mapping of where those additional areas might be. So what you're seeing is in light tan, some of the additional areas above and beyond the blue areas that are obviously your floodplain areas, that are potentially impacted. So that's something to be considered in the big picture. Now, it comes down to individual applications reviewing that differential in elevation in order to arrive at whether or not a property or a specific development is going to be impacted by those new regulations. But I wanted to provide it for informational purposes only, and we will be providing disclaimers on these maps because this is based on regional processes. It's not based on individual property events.
And we already have homes in some of those areas, right?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. And so what the DEP was trying to recognize is that the FEMA information is somewhat outdated. And they, they are saying that it's more like the flooding that was occurring during Ida. I'm not sure if any of you experienced some of that flooding, unfortunately, but I did, in fact, coming back from a meeting in Tana Fly, and I couldn't get home because of the flooding that was occurring on just the streets themselves. So that sort of thing is what the DEP regulations is trying to capture, so we're trying to recognize it in the study. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. So these are the series of maps that we started to prepare. We've also started to do an existing land use map as well. So we're mapping the existing land uses within the community, and also part of this study was required by statute is for us to fulfill that analysis, which won't be very involved because it's basically a built-out community. So what we'll be looking at is the vacant properties in that standpoint, and looking at whether or not from a vacant plan analysis, if there's a need to adjust your zoning or adjust land use. Likely in your condition, where you're a developed community, it may not result in much change in the limits of zoning. But what we may realize is certain changes to recommendations from design criteria, let's say. Trying to encourage more infiltration, something I'm sure you try to do now. I know Mike has been at it with trying to deal with that from roof runoff and things of that nature. So what we're trying to do is do our part to reduce the impact of the streams and flooding conditions as a result of some of the changes in the climate. So that's really the nature of what I think we're going to be capturing in this, in this study. Whereas in communities that maybe have more farmland or undeveloped areas, they may want to reconsider some of their zoning because of some of the changes and flood conditions. So that's really the update that I wanted to give to the board tonight. And to let you know that we'll be coming back at the series, next series of meetings with more information, segments of the study, and then ultimately we'll culminate it into a formal document for review and consideration. So that's my effort to give the board that information tonight, and open any questions.
First off, thank you. It's eye-opening, to say the least. Thank you. You know, with the three foot.
Yeah, that's.
That's big. That's, that's big.
This is not a limit line. That's what I want to make sure everybody's aware of. That's not an actual physical limit. It's sort of a calculation.
I don't have any questions or just a comment. So, you know, mayor and council, I know we've been very focused on flooding in the last year. So I think this study is perfect timing for that. I know Andy, our DPW superintendent, you know, he's, he's doing the best to clean out our inlets and our manholes and make sure that we minimize the flooding on the the overpasses and things like that, but I'd be very interested to get the PDFs on this because I know we bring this up in Land Use Committee. And, you know, we do address resident issues when they do have flooding, whether it's from a neighbor property or from storm. So I think this is going to be interesting information as a work in progress as we go.
And as they become available, I would recommend that you send them, you know, not, I know that you'll be in contact with us, but don't wait for me, you know, send them out to Linda and Linda will disseminate them to the board for us. Okay, please. Thank you. Go, you're going to comment.
You bring up a good point. In fact, not only just, just in that flooding areas, there's also potentially incidental flooding areas where maybe infrastructure is not sufficient. And in fact, this Monday, we're having a meeting of some of the municipal officials on this topic in order to gather that information. In other communities where I've done this study, we've then mapped those areas in order to maybe give you a laundry list of potential things to address in an effort to try to improve the condition.
No, that's, that's great. I know that's something we brought up in committee, and I know Andy's been kind of working on that, trying to pinpoint those areas where we've had excess flooding, whether it's the last six months, last year, two years, that normally didn't flood. Starting to see a lot more of that, areas that never flooded before are starting to flood.
And I, and I also recall during, I think it was Ida, as you pointed out, that there were areas that we never expected, and it was like, whoa. You know.
Just because I have a plane that's, yeah, short period of time.
We're seeing a lot more rain than normal, which is huge cause of it.
So the other thing too, that for instance, in the Pascat Valley, what they're trying to do is put together as communities of working together to try to approach DEP to look at areas that might be snagging of streams. Because as you can imagine, tree falls, things of that nature, all start to create clog within the stream network, but of course, that also is a balance between the biological health of the, of the stream with, with down trees forms a habitat for certain types of.
Wildlife.
Wildlife, thank you. I was thinking in burghers.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So therefore, that sort of thing has to be balanced, but yet they're, they're confronting DEP from a with the municipality saying, listen, we've got to do something because there's certain areas that are clogging up the trains.
Well, Saddle River, I know Mark, Marty Spence in Saddle River every five, seven years puts out a project where they clean and pull back like areas that were overburned with material on large rainfalls and D-snagging. And I know he works in conjunction with the county for that. The county will assist, and then there'll, there'll be a contract to pinpoint isolated areas that are that are, you know, are, are always in need of some cleanup.
The guardian.
Some of the work that you're.
Yeah, the guardians for that had been historically, it may still be, the Bergen County Mosquito.
Yes.
Extermination Commission.
Yeah.
Because I remember Chris Teal with his fishing waders going into one of the tributaries of the upper Saddle River area, of Saddle, the Saddle River, pointing out all of the debris that had accumulated due to winds that had collapsed from trees, et cetera. But they have traditionally been so overwhelmed with requests for clear outs and cleanups that applaud the regional initiative approach.
I, I also seem to remember Boy Scouts, correct me if I'm wrong, Boy Scouts going in and cleaning, you know, as part of their eagle badges or, or something along their requirements, they're cleaning out, I remember years ago right along De Mercurio Drive. Is that Hojocas Brook by the Acme? Okay, like that would be cleaned up of debris or garbage, but not necessarily pulling away, you know, they're not pulling away tree limbs. Exactly, exactly.
All right. Any other comments from, from the board? Well, I think this is a good, good study.
Excellent. Excellent. So please, if the information becomes available.
So you may see a big draft along it, because you want to make sure people are aware of it.
That's fair. Okay, no, thank you. Thank you for your time. Okay. The next item on our agenda is applicant file number 2024-09. Applicant is Interchem Corporation, 6 Pro Fort in Allendale, Block 601, Lot 6, and this application is for the reload. And this application is for the relocation of a generator.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Joseph Mecca. I'm an attorney. I have the pleasure of representing uh Interchem Corporation. My office is in Bramis, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Um, do I stand here? I'm not sure with the procedures or sits.
Yeah, oh yeah, you.
You can sit down?
Yeah.
Okay, because I noticed.
And then if you need.
Yeah, it's.
Are you going? Are you going to say? I can say it's up to you. Right? Uh just in case they need the easel, we'll steal the easel.
Oh, sure.
If it's necessary. Well, you have one. You have one. Great. Okay. You can go. Sure. It's up to you. Thank you. Thank you. It's up. It's it's your.
I'm sorry, counsel. I apologize. That's okay. Thank you for having me. Uh this is a fairly straightforward application. It's not the relocation of a generator. It's actually installing of a generator.
Okay.
Uh Interchem Corporation. Interchem Corporation um uh manufactures stores, um the the import uh prescription drugs. Uh this uh application is to install a generator. Basically, uh for safety purposes, uh for security purposes, these drugs need to be stored at a certain climate. Uh we're aware of what's been going on lately. If there was a power outage, they they do lose a lot of product and quite frankly, it's it's quite quite expensive. Uh the DEA also regulates uh some of their product. So they require that it be climate controlled as well as uh safety. They they're called DEA cages. Um I have two witnesses this evening. One is John Tate, who's the warehouse manager. He can testify as to the operations at the site. And then I also have Mr. Costa, who is our engineer on the project. So unless the board has any questions, I'll I'll call Mr. Tate. John, come on up.
Board members, anything?
No, okay, we can proceed. Thank you.
Mr. Tate, would you please raise your right hand to the either swear or affirm that this evening the testimony that you had given will be true. So.
Yes.
All right, you can have a seat. Uh John, tell tell us, uh first of, you work for uh you're employed by Interchem Corporation, correct?
Yes.
How long have you been employed by them?
About fourteen years.
All right. How long have you been the and you're the warehouse manager for the site at Six Pearl Court in Allendale?
Yes.
All right. How long have you been there?
Uh eleven years.
All right. So you're familiar with with the operations at that site?
Yes.
All right. So so tell the board, first of all, how many employees are typically onsite?
Uh real just two.
Okay. And what what happens at uh at that facility at that Six Pearl Court warehouse?
Uh I mean, basically materials brought in from it's raw material pharmaceuticals brought in from Europe primarily. Uh we store it here in the warehouse and then it gets sold to the companies in America here where they put it into final dosage.
All right. And you also, you mentioned about um that there DEA cages that are required for certain of of these uh.
Correct. So some of the product getting is uh controlled substances uh Schedule Four or List One Chemicals. And they have to be secured within a cage within the warehouse. Uh and those have to be alarmed, heavily alarmed. Um and the DEA actually is requiring us to have this backup generator uh in the event of a prolonged power outage.
And these, some of these uh uh pharmaceuticals also have to be stored at a certain temperature or certain climate control?
Yeah, they all will need to be uh 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 temperature controlled, the DEA products plus the other uh products that we import from Europe and uh you know, it could be anywhere from five to ten million dollars worth of product in there. So we want to make sure we keep that within spec. The temperature, again, in case of a prolonged outage. As well as the building, main building alarm system. So is the safety and is the safety of the product, the safety of the uh material inside the warehouse.
I have no further questions.
So so to be clear, excuse me, I'm sorry. So to be clear, the gen the use of the generator is not only for refrigeration backup as I or power backup for the refrigeration, but also for any alarming, et cetera, et cetera, as required by the government.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we have it's the DEA regulates us and the FDA regulates us, uh New Jersey Department of Health. Pretty heavily regulated.
And you said that there's, did I, did I, you said there's two employees on site?
Yeah, two.
Okay, two employees. Um there's a lot of parking space there.
A lot, yes.
Okay. All right.
I'll have the engineer.
Yeah, and we'll go through that with the engineers. Okay. Um. Board members, questions?
Comments? Have you parked in a different spot every day?
I could if I'd like. I'm a creature habit, so I usually take the same ones.
Do you like pull space in or?
I back in.
Takes his time. I live on the edge. Sometimes he takes up two spaces.
Sorry, guys. I'm just, what what is the current contingency plan now if there's a power outage?
Uh for now, there's backup battery for the alarm system, but that will only last continually about twenty four hours. Uh weren't so concerned about the backup generator before because we had a smaller warehouse space there. That's seventy five hundred square feet and we just took over the adjacent area uh where Striker used to be. They moved out.
Okay.
So now we have a total of about twenty two thousand five hundred and we're going to have more material stored in there.
In addition to what you currently have?
Uh, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
The tallest place you guys occupy now is about twenty.
Twenty two thousand five hundred.
Board members, any further questions? I I'm satisfied with this. Okay, all right. Yes, yes, yes. Uh, okay, I got to open this up to the public. Questions of this witness? Thank you. Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Okay. Um, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll call my.
Counselor, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Costa?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Mr. Costa, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you gave this evening in connection with this application would be? Please don't know that. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Costa, could you, uh, first of all, you were a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I.
Your license is still in good standing and yes?
No, it is.
Yes.
No, no, you you no, no, this is new. I think it's these cards with the expiration date because I know. Mr. Chairman, good evening.
Thank you.
Councilman, good evening, members of the board. They give you the card with the expiration date.
There you go.
So that's how you know that you paid. Did you pay?
And we've testified before numerous boards in the in in Bergen County elsewhere in New Jersey as a professional engineer.
Yes, I absolutely, Rick, I actually uh have a couple of boards that actually hired me. I don't know why, but they have River Edge right now on the land use, some municipal engineer there, Englewood. Uh Pagoda, we do work for the county and then on my spare time, we do stuff like this. And as I'm closing towards death, I'm actually getting expert cases in court. So that's where we're at. Yes, thank you.
All right. So less is more, but let's uh let's move forward.
I think we can accept Mr. Costa's qualifications. Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Costa, if you can go through with the board, the the uh the proposal here, starting with the site conditions.
Very quick. Uh my office prepared a site plan. Basically, the the survey was given to us. We went up there, verified it to make sure the parking spaces that exist, roughly three hundred parking spaces exist onsite. The proposal in front of you tonight, we're going to take away three parking spaces to place, excuse me, the generator parallel with the building, not perpendicular. That will move it, you have to be a minimum distance from the building under the building uh requirements because of the exhaust, which we are doing so. Um speaking earlier to the councilman, containment, we do not show containment. It's a double wall tank. But as an added precaution, we certainly will put containment around it, which means you put a curb based on the gallons and it'll be a shut off that during a rainstorm, someone's going to have to go out there. One of two, I guess, would have to go out there and then open that uh that valve in order to let it go out, the water. Uh obviously not the diesel and then shut it after the storm passes through. So we'll do that. We'll revise it accordingly. Um it's a two hundred A W generator. It's diesel powered, not natural gas. Uh obviously because of where it is, but also uh I've done quite a few generators and I've had this conversation and talked with a lot of people. If the gas supply goes out, the backup generation goes out. And the gas supply can go out, even though you see a lot of your roads being ripped up and new gas mains put in. Um River Edge, in fact, the south end of town, a pumping station, P S E N G could not supply the gas to that station. So we actually have a diesel generator adjacent to the street. And similar what we did, obviously we raised it up because of the flood issues and we put containment around it and literally it's on the banks of the uh not Colesbrook, could be Colesbrook. Um I've not had a problem. Uh similar here, same story. It's a level, I believe, level two attenuation as far as sound. If you walked up to it and it goes on, it's roughly eighty five decibels as you walk away from it. Obviously, the attenuation goes down. As you get to the property line, it's probably forty D B, which meets your code under your noise ordinance in town. Also, there's a noise ordinance uh with the state that we would have to meet and this absolutely does that.
How often is it?
Do they cycle it?
Yes, sir.
I should know that. Usually, I don't think it's weekly.
Um usually it's monthly.
Monthly. I think it's monthly, but not to say.
I imagine it's your residential people.
It's like every. And it goes off on maybe ten minutes.
Times. You you have to cycle them to make sure they work.
Of course.
But it's minimal and it can be obviously scheduled where it's not going to impact any of the neighbors. The closest house, again, based on Google Earth, we did this afternoon. It's around four hundred and fifty feet as you go towards the north west and it's over six hundred feet as you go to the south. So that would be the closest residence. There's actually a building in between the two on the opposite side and I think the borough, if I'm not mistaken, owns on the opposite side of Six Pearl Court. Um as I came at it, I actually went there today. As I went through the different buildings that are there, uh the building right adjacent to it has a generator onsite. It's in the rear of the building, similar to what this would be. If you go up one more, same thing as you're heading towards Route seventeen. Cummins, in my opinion, is probably one of the best ones you can install. River Edge. The municipal building has one, the borough uh the D P W has one, the pump station has one, the firehouse has one and the other fire. So everyone in River Edge that I've worked on, all Cummins.
Have a good tank. I'm sorry, did you say that?
It says twenty four hour minimum. Um if it's probably under a not a full load, probably burns about six to eight gallons per hour. Depending on obviously the low cap. I think the maximum on this particular generator, I think, is fifteen gallons per hour. Which I'm I doubt you're going to get to a full draw on on this.
No, I'm sorry, but the tank that you were, the the tank.
The minimum is twenty four hours. So you're going to have.
Tank size. I'm sorry. The I'm talking.
If the minimum size would be three hundred, if you have full load.
I'm sorry. Okay. All right.
I can tell you a story. I really don't want to get into it about, we had the diesel generator, Sandy comes in, eight hour supply. Um done. What we didn't figure out is you need a hose long enough to get to the back to refuel it, but I didn't say that on the record. So that's what you you have to have delivery.
Less is more.
Yes. But. Um and basically that's it.
Right. So the plans that you have, the the board has, just describe the plan. So for the record, we 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 know what we're looking at.
All right. And again, in the in the rear of the building, we're taking out three parking spaces parallel with the building. Uh it'll be placed on a reinforced um concrete pad. Uh it's showing three inches at a minimum off grade. I spoke to uh John Chisula, who's going to be doing the actual work and and the hookup. I'd rather revise these plans and make it a minimum of at least six inches, probably eight inches is better. We're going to put bollards around the entire generator. This way, if there is a car, they'll hit the bollard before they hit the generator. You need access, so you have access panels. They're far enough away from that. So when you open the doors to the access panels, you can actually service the generator. And this will do that.
I'm planning with the bollards because I noticed that there's parking space, that there's parking. Am I reading that correctly? There's parking right.
Yeah.
Behind it. Correct. So.
Just for the benefit of the council, uh the protocol here is that if the application has had the plans submitted, they don't typically mark as A one. It's the entire submission is your application and the record. However, if you intend to, and you may not be, as I think you're finishing up, uh have other documents that have not made its way to the board secretary, then we will mark them. But I think I'm hearing Mr. Costa say that you'll be submitting if approved.
If approved, excuse me, revised plans based on the following, I believe, conditions. There'll be a containment area around the entire base of the generator larger than the gallons, obviously, of the tank itself. So that area will have enough surface area and volume that it could capture in the event that this tank ruptures, it would be contained in that area. So I'll revise it accordingly. Um we will move it over slightly and as I said, the the actual pad is showing the three inch minimum. I'd like to go to at least six to eight inches. So it'll be raised up a little bit higher. But again, it uh if there is an issue, it's.
It's three to what? Three, two?
Three, two, eight. Either six or eight would be my recommendations. Um the bollards will be placed around the entire generator, just in in the event that a car is backing up or coming down. It'll be painted uh with caution yellow so you can see it. If the board wants decorative, we can certainly put decorative uh plastic over the top of it to have it look a little more aesthetic.
But ones are with the bilious yellow, so that it's very, very much.
Just did Oradel animal pos. And we painted the bases of the lights yellow. You'd be amazed how many, how many of those are hit already. So, yes.
Excellent.
Do you plan to do any kind of striping in the three spaces you're using? Because right now your plan just shows you're putting a generator over three spaces. Were you going to do any kind of hatching?
We'll hatch it out absolutely.
So in your revised plan, just going to.
We'll show the hatching, obviously nothing in there and then um probably what's going to happen is the curb will come around the entire, the that entire space.
So with you putting it parallel and with looking at the generator plan detail and looking at the doors. I mean, you guys have done these things before, so I'm just asking an engineering question as an engineer. The doors opening to the what I'll call the building side, so that's not going to restrict any. Is there any?
They're three feet. Those are the doors themselves, I think, are three feet, two inches, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's a minimum of five feet you need to be off the building. We're showing five feet minimum. Look, we can certainly slide it a little bit, but as long as you have that distance, you cannot, you can actually service.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure you're not restricted. More looking out for you, that you're not restricted.
And I appreciate it.
Okay. Um.
Is there a reason why you didn't center it within the three spaces, just to give more room on either side?
Well, we have to fire somebody tomorrow morning because they just try to make it a little more complicated. It should be, obviously, it should be centered and it should be centered within those.
So it's not tight to one parking space?
Right, yes.
This, I think there's three hundred and five spaces. You're going to take away three of three hundred and two.
Correct.
And the requirement for the warehouse is like a hundred and twenty something.
I'm a symmetry guy. It'll be, it'll be centered. It'll be a curve around it. It'll look, it'll look correct in few, and then we will revise the planning board.
And I'm certainly not going to speak for the fire department, but as I look at this, given, you know, given where cars, when you walk there in an in an awful situation, there's no, there's no restriction or or it's not hurting any hinder or hindering anything coming around the back of the building.
No.
Are we, I agree. So, okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh I'm, board members, please, I
I just don't, I just want to say thank you for the containment. You know, I know that's it. It's something that may be viewed as uncommon, but other generators in this area, you'll notice had containment. It's one thing for the community and for the vegetation and the neighbors. God forbid, there is a spill. God forbid, the guy fell in it, goes to answer the phone and the hose falls out while he's filling it, just. We appreciate that as a.
And again, here, um I'm not sure if they're required to to submit a uh a plan, but if they're not, I'll make sure that if there's inlets within close proximity, they have uh the equipment to put over the top of the inlet, so it would stop it before it gets there, so and so forth. And I'll go over that with the.
I guess our borough engineering reviews your revised plan. I'm sure you can take a look at some of that.
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, I, we initially reported or reviewed the application and I visited the site. And Mr. Costa indicated that there are other account equipment and generators in parking lots in the area. This is in some of the. You know, based on the scope of the proposal and the fact that it's located in parking lot, the site is all apart, we can feel a necessary generator report and. Given the changes that have been.
Mr. Costa, I I, you know, we sort of, like, we've been through these a few times, okay? So this board is not our first roadkill.
Okay.
So that's why you're getting the volume of questions and the methodology that we're asking the question. So I thank you.
All the right questions and hopefully I gave the right answers.
No, you did. And and I just, I just want to, um you know, I I I know that um there were some questions about relocating, things like that. You're going to update your plan, but if there's anything, uh we just want to get on the record that if there's anything that comes up, you're willing to work with our. if there's anything, uh, we just wanna get on the record that if there's anything that comes up, you're willing to work with our engineer?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright.
Um, just let me make sure if there's something that comes up in the field or something.
Yeah.
You have a problem with that?
Okay, you're willing to accommodate it for you, I don't think we're, like, you never know. Okay, where something may come up as you're doing.
So who would say no to that?
Right, no, we're not gonna.
I just got.
Well, I I don't know if um Mr. Costa can answer, because it's on uh on Luke Heady's drawing, but uh, is there a reason why they use a tier three and not tier four, because now the generators are moving to tier five, unless it's an old spec he has?
To be. And I don't know. They were handed, yeah, just, yeah, we were handed this, that plan, and then I guess they submitted the building farm to building farm, and said you gotta go, obviously, by any board. Um, I did not spec out the generator.
I I.
From what I'm told, the generator has been ordered, and it's been ordered months ago.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if it's physically in, not in on the site, but in uh, from the manufacturer, which it could very well be, so that that could be why.
Okay. And the existing uh electricity of the building is currently three phase?
Yes. It's three phase, I think it's, yes.
Yes, yes.
And everything will be on the ground, so this will come out on ground, uh, into it and then trench back into the EFL.
Board members, any further questions of this witness? Okay, seeing none from the board, I open it up to the public. Being done, I bring it back. Uh, councilman? Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you for your testimony.
I I have nothing further.
Nothing further, okay. Um, Michael, we've heard from you, we're good?
Yeah, if uh everyone is aware that the provision of impact in our inner circulation construction code of visual. That might have to be here, you have no continuing comment. In change.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, any further discussion on this application? Okay, seeing none, um, bring it back to the board, okay.
Okay.
Um, I would like to please have a motion to uh approve this particular application, thank you, sir. And do I have a second?
And I'll second.
Thank you.
Right, Chairwoman Bergen?
Yes.
Board Member Wazala?
Yes.
Board Member Gettrina?
Yes.
Board Member Gugliaro?
Yes.
Councilman Deloissio?
Yes, uh, with with the caveat that the applicant is gonna revise the plans, and our borough engineer reviews them based on the testimony with the containment and the hatching and everything else that he testified to.
Yes.
Chairman Serico?
Yes.
Walter Nutt Butler?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks to see you, be well. Congratulations on your anniversary.
Thank you. Take care.
Alright.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Costa, you should do stand up.
Yeah.
He's actually been accused of doing that on many of the applications I presented with him.
When you fire the engineer, Mr. Costa, tell him to uh spell check his. Spell diesel.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Um, our next item on the agenda is opening it to the public for comment. Do I see anybody? Being done, I bring it back to the board, okay. Mr. Deloissio?
Yes.
You know what our usual question is?
We have not, the land use committee has not met in several weeks. Um, Chairwoman Lobosolo is, I believe she's on vacation. Uh, once we have a meeting, I will be happy to give the board and the residents a report. Um, you know, Mr. Snikus' timing is actually uh perfect, because the committee has discussed the flooding issues around town. Uh, me, Chair of our DPW Committee with our superintendent, Mr. Gugliaro, you know, that's an issue that we are very mindful of our residents, and making sure that our community is safe and our roads are clear, and that the water is not pooling where it shouldn't be, so. I know we, uh, the committee has also looked at code, uh, the council did vote last meeting on code change. Uh, one of our code requirements for utilities allowed for them to pave only a portion of the road that they disrupt. So the new code change that was approved uh will enforce utilities to pave curb to curb. So we'll have better, better road surfaces in the future, and that's where they'll have to report.
You may or may not know this, um, are there any, are we done with all of the disruption? Uh, I'm sorry, sir.
On Franklin Turnpike, yes.
Well, okay, thank you, okay, anywhere, or I mean.
We'll be, we will be doing more paving in town this year, and that'll be coming soon.
Okay, but um specific, is PSENG done?
Uh, PSENG hasn't told us anything as of current.
Okay, and the water?
Uh, water's still ongoing.
Okay, okay, alright.
I don't think we're ever gonna be done, I mean, there's always gonna be some.
There's always gonna be some. Okay.
I mean, definitely, I just from doing it in other towns, it's definitely prudent to know what PSENG's plan is, and make sure that Viola with their lead program works in the areas where public service is putting the gas. Because I've been in municipalities where we've done five hundred and fifty lead services, repaved the roads curb to curb, and four of the streets are being cut up by PSENG. So.
That would kind of make me.
It it sucks because the, I hate to use the word, but it stinks because the residents are 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 impacted, and they put up with everything, and then PSENG decides to show up and saw cut. And, you know, and just disrupt the residents even more, so.
That's, that's why with Franklin Turnpike, we had Julia come through and make sure they did everything they needed to do and.
Yeah, just.
That was all done.
I put it out there because a lot of times when you think they're talking to each other, they don't. And what, thankfully, you know, like Andy, there was a DPW guy there who brought it up and made sure that Viola spoke to PS and kind of altered their plans so that the work that was being done is being done on the same roads. And not that Viola's working on one side of town, PS works on another, and then they decide to.
So, Art Artage and Rockland uh have been very proactive with that as well, so we've been communicating back and forth with uh, going back and forth with road programs, so.
Yeah, but that is something that I know our DPW and our mayor council, we are working on trying to get those communications, you know, with our police chief sending out our alerts to the community, so they know when roads are gonna be blocked, you know, unfortunately, that's been a moving target. And we're trying to mitigate all that stuff, but that's a good recommendation on your part to.
I mean, it's just, it's just ask the question.
No, absolutely.
Because PS will come in, they they feel like they do what they want, and ultimately, you have, you have a burden. The water department has a burden to update their systems, like ten percent of the system a year, so that's why they do the digging determines, and they find out if there's lead, and then they schedule the lead. And all that, there's a lot of work that takes place behind the scenes, but if they don't communicate, you end up having those situations where you know, the left doesn't know what the right's doing, and then and then the municipality unfortunately gets the brunt of it, because.
From the residents.
Yeah.
Upset.
Exactly, and you have not, unfortunately, unless, you know, you you don't have much to do about it.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, I I'm happy about the uh, the paving situation, because I happen to live on a street where I've got half side new, half side old and or older. Okay, it is what it is, but it kind of looks a little weird.
There's, does that ordinance, um, I'll make them infrared if, what is the ordinance on a road that's been paved and has a mortuary?
Three year mortuary.
So let's say there's an emergency, what do you make them do? Infrared and or curb to curb for that section, okay.
Except for Mike Serico's block, we're not going there.
Probably gonna go to the white line.
There you go, there you go, there you go, um. Okay, any, 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 and and I don't know if you have any, Andy, if you want, no, okay, Michael, anything?
No.
Alright, I just wanna, um, I just wanna thank you, I know the summer's here, thank you for coming, thank you for participating. Um, if anybody hasn't done the stormwater, please get that done. Um, and the cybersecurity thing, I had a conversation with Coban Computers uh over the weekend. Um, it's something that we really, that we have to do, I'm gonna be honest with you guys, I haven't done it, actually, I had to sit through some, where I worked during the day. And I have to do it, it's not that hard. So please, if we can get that this way, the land use boards, we're good in good standing. Okay, um, having said that, we are planning to have a meeting, the next meeting, Linda's the twenty-first, as I talked earlier, where we plan to have the nursing home come before us again, or to finalize or to finish. So, um, please, if you if you have a moment to just brush up on what was discussed in the last meeting, so we can, we can take a look at this, right now, it's planned for the twenty-first, Linda will um advise us all accordingly. And um, and oh, and and also, just let Linda know if you guys are gonna, you know, if we can make these meetings, because if we, we have to always make sure we have a forum, and especially on the lap, that one, where uh the mayor and Mr. Deloissio cannot sit in on it, so it's important, and if we don't have everybody, Andy, you can sit on that, you sit on that, yeah. You said it, yeah, so, um, and that's about it, so I just wanna say thank you again.
What what does the restrict, I I live on that street. Um, I'm not too far, two hundred feet, okay.
Yeah, two hundred, yeah.
Okay.
Two hundred feet.
Okay.
You didn't receive a uh notice of that application, did you?
Ask, uh, my, my shirt.
Okay, alright. Um, and other than that, um, I think we're good, can I have a uh? Motion to.
Just, just real quick, so you bring up a good point, I know in the past, you know, it's been explained, I know you're a relatively new member, if you ever think that there's a an issue with, you know, you being two floors or something, you should always talk to the council, just just ask, in case there's.
You gotta notice, definitely.
Okay. Yeah, if you gotta notice, yeah, absolutely.
If it's, you know, but even if it's borderline, you're always better to recuse yourself, that way there's no priorities.
I will tell you that I've had a couple of them, where I had one that wasn't near my house, but the council that was appearing before us closed my house at like two in the afternoon, and we were having a meeting at seven o'clock. So I asked council, and they were like, listen, we got enough people, you know, go sit in the audience. So anything, you know, any board member, anything that you see.
Right.
So thank you, Joe, for raising that, but that's very important.
There you go.
That's why I get the big bucks.
That's why you get the big bucks, so, alright, listen, I I know we always keep it a little light today, a little over an hour, thank you once again, and uh, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, if I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any events, okay, thank you very much, see you guys next month, thank you again.
Thank you, sir.